Great, thank you. I'm Megan Coleman, I'm the state senator for District 15, which includes Pawtucket and a chunk of Providence, but this is my area. I am here in strong opposition to these cuts. Last time we floated cuts in Pawtucket, there was a community meeting right around the corner at the visitor's center, and there was a woman who, I think she was talking about the 71, it might have been the 78, but she had to, she couldn't drive because she had epilepsy, I think it was. But without bus service, she cannot get to work. And she went to tears on the podium right there because not being able to get to work means that she no longer can pay her mortgage, that means losing her house. That is the stakes here, right? And I want to be really clear that I appreciate Ripta being here, and like, the responsibility for funding Ripta lies with us, the General Assembly, and the governor. It does not lie with Ripta. Ripta's job is to provide bus service. So I very much regret that we, as leadership of the state, have put them in this position. But nonetheless, I feel very strongly that these are bad cuts. Forty-four percent of bus service in Pawtucket being affected, that's not tenable for a city like this that relies on service the way ours does. I was the sponsor of the Free R Line program that some of you may remember from a couple of years ago, and during that time, we saw bus ridership increase by 48% during the year that that was free. So we had frequent bus service and we had fare-free, but I understand that we're not able to talk about fare-free buses, given the current economic climate. But the point is, is that we can't have any serious conversations about economic development, we can't have any serious conversations about environmental equity if we are cutting the head off the thing that enables the working class of this community to get from point A to point B. It's just absurd. And again, we got here through, of course, a long series of underfunding Ripta going back years and years and years. That responsibility belongs with us and the General Assembly. That said, the shortage of $15 million in a budget of $14 billion is less than a percent. We should be able to, we should have done that during this session. It is appalling that we didn't. And I find this to be an unacceptable outcome for the members of this community. I also want to note, I just want to say that, you know, the Route 1, I think is, was up there, is moving to every 32 minutes. That's the line that goes right through to Brown University, goes through the east side. It's a heavy commuting line, and people don't commute on the bus if it's not frequent enough to be reasonable, right? It's not frequent enough to be efficient. And the R Line was piloted as the first bus rapid transit program in the state. At the time, it was going every 10 minutes. The same thing, is that like, if it's every 20 minutes, people are not going to be finding it as useful, and therefore, they're not going to be riding it. We call this a transit death spiral. And that is not an acceptable outcome for this community. So while I very much appreciate all the folks who are at Ripta trying to figure out how to make an extremely lean and extremely efficient agency more efficient, we should not be putting them in this position, and I oppose these cuts. So, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for being here. My name is Walter Moore, I'm president, business agent, local 618, 618A out of Providence, and we represent all the members at Ripta that work so hard daily to get you where you need to go. So I'm here in opposition to these cuts. It's devastating, not only to this community, but to all around communities, forty-four percent of the cuts, just in Pawtucket alone. So, more on a personal note, we know what the impact is, and one of the things I'm here to say is that, you know, if the governor was here and listening to you and listening to the hardship, what I would say to him, what do you say to people that need to go to the hospital, that need healthcare, that, you know, either, you know, they can go to therapy, or go to, go to school, just everyday essentials, what do you say to those people? Look them in the eye, and what do you say to them? Because you're taking something away that's essential to their life. And he's not here, right? He's not here, so, and I don't believe he was at any of them. And I would like to see him out here, because, you know, you're the face, you're the face of the community, and he represents you. So what he's doing to you is not good, right? It's not good. And he can't, can't let the people around him to be left behind. So, I just want to say that the union's here with you, you know, our members, their hardship, you know, possibly coming down the road, and obviously, that lays on my shoulders. And this is emotional to me, because this affects so many people I've worked with for over the course of 28 years, that work so hard, you know, to provide the service to Ripta also. And they're with, they're with you. And they're out there representing Ripta every day to do the best job and to get you where you need to go. And I'm sure some of you have relationships with your bus drivers, or even somebody at Ripta. And this is the service we need, it's essential, and it's a value to the community. So, we're here with you, in support, and we're doing everything we can. But please, call your legislators, your senators, the governor, the mayor, you gotta get the voice out there. So, thank you.
Hello. I've jotted down a few things that I'd like to say. One thing is, have you considered smaller buses? I would hope that Ripta has made an analysis as to the cost of cutting, of looking at the effectiveness of smaller buses to circulate when a large bus isn't needed. Environmental unsoundness of this proposal. How are we to achieve our goals of breathing clean air if we cut Ripta buses? Those lofty goals will be hampered if we cut service, or make it exceedingly uncomfortable to ride public transit. Do not raise fees. I propose something of this sort, to give every Rhode Island citizen vouchers worth $100 or whatever amount to be used on rider's fees. When these vouchers are depleted, the rider then is charged, will be charged. This will demonstrate how convenient and useful the transit truly is. And lastly, at my age, I don't know how long I'll be physically able or financially able to drive. If bus service is reduced, or in some areas, completely eliminated, what will I and others in similar circumstances do? Thank you.
All right, so my name, so as a few of you in the audience might know, my name is Daniel Blanchett. I live in Pawtucket, and I am a primary user of the 76, and occasionally with the 80, and especially on Sundays, the 35. I primarily use the 76 and 35 to get to, to get to my workplace, which is the vets, the Veterans Memorial Auditorium in Providence, conveniently next door, nearby from the State House. But, here's my problem. I graduated last year from, from a college up in Boston, somewhat cumblaudy, so I've got stu-, so I've got student loans to pay off, and because, and because of that, I need the buses to be able to not just get to work, but also be able on Sundays to get to church. I use the 35 to connect to another bus towards North Providence. So, without these bus, without the 76 especially, I don't know I'm, how I'm going to get to work, I don't know how I'm going to get to the credit union in downtown Pawtucket, which is not far from here. And, for that matter, I don't even know how I'm gonna pay my student loans. On top of that, Eastern Pawtucket has always been historically underserved by the system. I know there have been instances where they've tried to come up with ways, but I've nev-, but most of them, I haven't seen being used as of, as of yet. And I know last time, what, last time that we had the, that we had the emergency where they were thinking of cutting 70, the 76 and all that, the last time someone came up with a pretty ingenious idea of doing the, of doing the loop route that would have combined most of the 76 and 80 together, if it, you're considering how many people, considering how important the 76 and the 80 are for Eastern, for Eastern Pawtucket, including the Central Avenue Corridor, which the transit master plan has some, has somewhere listed as an area with very underserved demand, including, I should add, a series of apartments that is being constructed conveniently next door to a Ripta bus stop on the 76, near the Central Daggett intersection. All I can say is, whatever it, whatever it takes to keep, to keep all of the buses in Pawtucket east of, east of the Blackstone going, that's, if you, if there's, if you guys need to talk with me after the public comment period, I'm more than welcome to. I've got plenty of time before I have to, well, I would say, catch a bus home, but considering the 76 doesn't, has stopped running at this point, it would be going for an expensive Uber, which I cannot afford with, with paying off student loans.
Hi, my name is William Moitoso. I'm an avid rider of Ripta, I've been riding Ripta for 40-plus years. I first want to start with thanking Ripta for not canceling a bus line I use all the time, which is the 61X. I know you have to cut it, that's an interesting bus line in to itself, but I do appreciate the fact that it hasn't been cut. I do have a couple of questions for the situation. One question I go for is, is why does Ripta allow a lot of deadheading on the bus lines? And what I mean by that is, the bus will get to its destination, not at a hub, and, and then drive all the way back to a hub, or drive to a very distant location to start a new route, where you're wasting money. On the other side to that, at night, when the bus line ends at its destination, the bus should come back to Providence and still pick up fares, because you could create, increase money that way. The other question I have is, is why hasn't Ripta done what it did in the past and started merging bus routes together? You do have two super routes running, which would be the 142, which is now just the 1 line, and the R Line, which is the 9911. There are a few lines that could do it, and it would save into Pawtucket some of the bus lines. You could do it with like, the CCRI, which would be 73 and 51. And the final thing is, is I've noticed, because as I say, I ride the bus a lot, that a lot of times, the buses are coming in broken. With a case point, I was on one bus, not a bus line, the same bus four times in the month of July, and it wasn't accepting fares. So there's a lot of buses that go through that, it's one reason or the computer-wise, that they're glitching, and right there, you're losing revenue. So that's my opinion on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Johnson. I'm gonna stand. I work for the community library system in Providence, and I work for, work for the SEIU, teaching English as a second language and citizenship courses to mostly immigrant people here in Providence. I took the 73 here today to be here, which will be eliminated soon if these cuts, as proposed, go through. It was only about 10 minutes late, which is pretty good for this system. Still, the blind guy that I was with still missed his connection on the R. I don't know what he was gonna do, he was pretty upset. This is pretty par for the course, I'm not gonna call you people. I don't think this is an efficient bus service. I think anyone who rides this bus service regularly knows that buses come late, buses come early, buses do not come, buses drive past you. Riding the Ripta means that you have to be prepared for violence, drug use, indecent exposure, all sorts of things like that. This is nothing short of class warfare. These cuts are absolutely catastrophic to working people, such as myself and the people that I teach. I'm curious what cuts have been proposed to executive salaries at Ripta. I'm wondering how often Ripta executives and board members ride the buses that they serve. Why should you be able to take money out of my pocket? Why do you have no skin in this game? You make $178,000 a year as CEO of this, I mean, it's $86 an hour, right? Yes? Yes? This is unconscionable. I'm not going to stand up here and pretend like this is a good job. This is a poor job that's only going to get worse. And yes, the representative was absolutely correct. This is a death spiral intended to completely eliminate service for this entirely. We all know this. That's all I got, thanks.
Hello, my name is Randall Rose. I'm, I'm from Providence, I'm a member of the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition, which is a bus rider group, there are several of us here. So I'm glad so many people turned out. Ripta really does not want to make these cuts. These cuts are not Ripta's fault, but Ripta depends on funding from the state, from the state, from the General Assembly, and unfortunately, the state politicians decided not to give Ripta enough money this year. The, Ripta asked for the amount they needed, but as was said earlier, they got 10 million less than they need to keep the service running. So that's why we're looking at these severe cuts. And it's, we, a lot of people are gonna end up being stuck at home, some seniors will be homebound, people will have trouble getting to work. It's gonna cause very serious effects for a lot of people. So I think it's good that people want to speak out here, but as long as our words here just go to Ripta and the Ripta Board, they're not gonna make any difference. Because the Ripta Board has no way of getting more funding to keep these routes running. So these decisions are made by the top leaders in the State House, I mean, the governor, the senate president, and the House Speaker. They're the ones who make the decisions about money in this state. So, if you want to keep bus service running, I think it's important to actually contact your elected officials. Just let them know this is important, and I see a number of state reps and state senators and other elected officials here, a lot of them really realize this is important, so it's, it's good. But unfortunately, these decisions are not made by rank-and-file legislators, they're made by the House Speaker, senate president, and the governor. So, I think almost everybody got this flyer already, I think the, what we need to do is call the top politicians and tell them, this is not okay. And what the, the way the state works is, the top politicians like to experiment with shortchanging money. Even if they know that this service is something people need, they try cutting the budget, see if there's an outcry or, and a backlash, if there's not much of an outcry, they figure, okay, we can keep the spending down on this, we don't have to provide any more money. But if there is a backlash, then they put the money back. So I would encourage people, tell other, tell others to call these politicians, call the governor, senate president, house speaker, and also contact your state rep and state senator, if they're not already here. Please tell them, not just to fund this, but tell them to, if they're a state rep, tell them to, to talk to the house speaker and ask for more funding for Ripta. If they're a state senator, tell them to talk to the senate president and ask for more funding for Ripta. Because that's where the decision is going to be made. And ideally, we should be expanding service, not talking about cutting it. So I know, last month, there was a debate in the state senate, some senators actually wanted to add that 10 million for Ripta, and some of the senators who are here voted for that, but not all of them did. I think from the senators around here, Senator Urso, Tocoi, and Thompson voted no on that. So I think it is important to tell them to change that. I think you can convince them to change their mind, but it's important. And also, it's good to join bus rider groups, not just the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition that I'm in, but also Rhode Island Transit Riders and Save Ripta, those are good groups too. We have a sign-up sheet if people want to join the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition, because if you join one of these rider groups, it tells, it helps amplify our voice and makes politicians listen to us. So, thank you. And, and please don't blame Ripta, make sure that the blame is on the politicians who make the decisions. Thank you.
My name is Ulama Gomez, and I am a Pawtucket resident, and currently the director of constituent services and health for the city of Central Falls. I'm here today in both my, in my Fisher capacity as someone who personally understands the importance of reliable public transportation. As a former Uncle Ripta rider, if you know, you know, I relied heavily on the bus during my early college years to get to work and stay on track with my education. That experience shaped my understanding of how vital Ripta is, not just for convenience, but for opportunity and survival. Today, I see that same reliance every day in my work with the residents of Central Falls. Our community is one of the most economically vulnerable in the state. Many of our residents do not own cars and depend entirely on Ripta to get to work, attend medical appointments, and care for their families. Any service cuts or changes, specifically bus lines, 71, 72, 75, would be a devastating impact, and not just on individual lives, but on the stability of our, of our city as a whole. These are people already doing everything they can to stay afloat. They'd be in a tough spot without reliable transportation. I urge the board in the state to explore creative solutions to fill it, to fill the funding gap. This is more than a budget issue, it's a matter of equity, access, and dignity. Reliable public transportation is not a luxury, it's a lifeline. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening all. My name is Alberto Riva, I serve by the Central Four City Council for World One, in the city of Central Falls. I'm here today because the proposal for cut the route for 71, 72, and 75 will have a huge impact to our community, especially of the most vulnerable people. Central Four is a newly populated diverse city where many residents don't have transport, own transportation. For them, public transportation is no choice, it's a lifeline. It helps them get to the medical appointment, grocery store, jobs, school, and care for their loved ones. Now, 20% of the population is over the age of 65. Many live in places like Front Main, Wilfay Main, Round Place Apartment, Blackstone Four Apartment. They're really on the Ripta every single day. For them, these roads are not luxury, they are necessary. Eliminating these roads will isolate people. It will limit their access to food and opportunity. As they elect their representative, I respectfully urge you to move forward with these cuts. Leaving our community, we're willing to find alternatives that prioritize people over numbers. Public transportation must be reliable, affordable, and accessible for everyone, not just for the privilege. Thank you, and for your time and your commitment for all Central Four residents and the all residents of the state of Rhode Island. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wanda Garcia, and I'm the resident service coordinator at the Central Falls Housing Authority. I'm here on behalf of our residents to submit this petition in response to the proposed Ripta service changes. These signatures represent community members who rely on public transit every day to get to work, school, medical appointments, and necessities. The proposed change will have a serious impact on their ability to live independently and stay connected. We are asking Ripta to reconsider any services caused to Central Falls, and work with us to find solutions that keep transportation accessible and equitable for our community. Thank you for your time and for receiving this petition.
Hi, it's so good to see so many people out. My name is Representative Shereen Cruz, in District 58, here in Pawtucket, and I am here in strong opposition to these cuts. And I also want to share, you know, the bus routes, 73, 75, 76, 71, 72, I grew up all my life taking here, in Pawtucket, whether it was to get to my job from one side of the city to the other, or to downtown Providence, or to school in Lincoln, at CCRI, wherever it was, I took these buses. And here, as a state representative, especially on these routes and in my district, we're talking about hundreds of seniors, people with disabilities, working-class members, literally eliminating, obliterating their public transportation, their way to get through life. This is a basic necessity to get around, whether it's going to a medical appointment, to the market, to religious services, community activities, seeing family members, it doesn't matter, these are going to be devastating to my community. And, you know, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what I heard others say, but it is the General Assembly, it's the leadership, it is the governor, and I need Ripta to really stress this. Like, we're in dire need, I need you to also show the same anger and urgency with those same people as we do in the public, as we call out. So I can't underscore enough that we need everyone to reach out to the governor, we need everyone to reach out to leadership. We found money in the last minute for things like Citizens Bank, but here, we got everyday working-class people, right? That need it, $10 million. It wasn't a shortage of good ideas, because they were there, but they got shot down. And now we're here again, because I remember being here a couple of years ago and hearing people in my community, working at the factories where still some of my family members work, who are taking the bus here in Pawtucket and need that to get to work. So we're talking about, when we cut these services, we're already in a housing crisis. We're going to increase that crisis and homelessness in our state, and so many other things. So with that, I'll, I'll add, but again, I'm in strong opposition, and please reach out, and let's keep putting pressure on, because that's what's needed right now more than ever.
Hello, I'm Francis Boyd, and I live in Pawtucket here. I live in Pawtucket Housing, so I know how the cuts are gonna affect the people in the city, especially on the 73 line, because St. Germain, Pawtucket Housing, they depend on that line, that's the only way they can get around. I, with my activities, I live on the 71 line. I can either take the buses, at least I'm healthy enough to walk, friends at times, or even Uber. But, it's devastating, because it's gonna change the lifestyle, people who depend on it for their social activities, to stay healthy mentally and physically, it's gonna affect them very hard. So I hope that we can get this going, and Ripta, the board doesn't cut the lines. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Stewart, and I'm state representative for the 59th House District, which includes the communities of Oak Hill and Woodlawn here in Pawtucket. And I'm here, like my colleagues before me, to express my strong opposition to these service cuts. I won't get into repeating all the good reasons why these service cuts are bad for the people of Pawtucket, and they're bad for the people of Rhode Island, and they're bad for the stability and economic development and environmental future of the state. So I just want to underscore those big reasons that connect to what you've already heard. My mother is a regular rider of Ripta, and I'm an occasional rider of the number one. Anyone who rides the bus at all can tell you here in Rhode Island that the bus, as you heard before, is not always on time, right? If you think about having to wait 50 minutes or more for a bus, when there's already a big chance that something could happen, and that bus may not arrive, or you might miss it, that's a huge risk, and that is a sure recipe for the transit death spiral. That was mentioned earlier by my colleague Senator Coleman, because if you're waiting potentially an hour or more, you're not gonna take that risk, right? To try, get to work, or to get to your important appointment. And I think these cuts are frankly immoral, because they pile on to people who already have many challenges and hardship, and in a system that already doesn't respect people's time, right? So, I just want to underscore that you need to get in touch with us, pressure us, pressure our General Assembly leadership, and pressure Governor McKee to say this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jake Takarwich. I'm coming to you from Warwick, came up here tonight for this. I'm not a frequent Ripta rider, but I can tell you how it still impacts me, these proposed cuts. My partner and I moved to Rhode Island about two years ago from Illinois for work, to start our lives here together, and among many other reasons, one reason we chose to come to Rhode Island was actually because of the extensive transit that's offered by Ripta. My partner does not drive, she takes the bus every day to and from work at Brown on the 1 line, which comes through here at Pawtucket as well. I work in Groton, an hour in the opposite direction. So, I know that when I leave for work in the morning, I don't have to worry really about her. She gets on the bus, she goes to work, from when she leaves to when she comes home, I know that she's in a safe spot, in a reliable spot. And that's what people need, and these cuts take away that reliability in people's lives. And it's, it's not going to help with, you know, some of the things that were brought up on the slides earlier, improving the, the public image and the experience for the riders, this is gonna do the complete opposite, as many people have said, leading to sort of a death spiral where- leading to sort of a death spiral where people are going to, you know, lose ridership, really. The section of the one route that is proposed to being cut affects several miles on Post Road down to the airport. We live in an apartment building on Post Road. It's a very busy road. I cannot imagine really getting anywhere without getting on Post Road. And so for the people who do not drive, cannot drive, and have to take the bus, I don't know how they're going to get around. The section of Post Road we are on that's going to be cut is home to our apartment, is home to a senior living facility, is home to a large Walmart with many employees, many medical facilities as well. I don't know how these people get to work or to their medical appointments or how people will even get to Walmart to get some cheap groceries. And not only will this be, you know, an area that is underserved, but punished. And really, every area that is being cut will be punished by a cut, right? Buses are not just a mode of transportation. They are not just a convenient luxury, as many people have already said that they are a lifeline. They provide people with safety to alternatives. They provide people accessibility, opportunity, and a method of earning their living, which has many ramifications down the road if they don't have that opportunity. And so, you know, I do, I strongly oppose these proposals. And while I'm not a rider, I can't imagine, you know, my partner not having an easy way to get to work. That does frighten me. And like many of you, if these cuts go through, we're going to have to figure it out and I don't know where to begin with that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lori Ursel. I'm the State Senator representing District 8 in Pawtucket. It goes without saying that I oppose cuts to services that affect our and other communities in which our residents rely on public transit. I myself, for three years, rode Ripta buses to and from school every day and I'm no stranger to the benefits they provide. This is the third public hearing I've attended and I've appreciated hearing from some of the other constituents in other areas. Peter in Warwick pointed out, which I thought was important, that we haven't been given any information on what the savings will be from this enormous amount of cuts and how it will impact the deficit that Ripta is talking about. Nor has Ripta made any apparent effort to come up with alternatives to these cuts. There is no talk of combining routes, using smaller buses, or perhaps alternating weekend routes. And in Pawtucket, we have a 76 and an 80 route that are very similar and they're proposing cutting both routes as opposed to attempting to combine the routes or to alternate the routes on weekends. A young man named Daniel, a college student from Tiverton, spoke about the idea of working with the universities to potentially increase slightly the collections for the wave pass for students. And that is currently assessed at only $1 per credit hour and he said he would be more than willing to pay a little extra. And finally, one other was Lynn from Cumberland, who called out the hypocrisy of a statement that says, "We're going to do everything we can to preserve service to get people to work, school, training, and doctor appointments." And then turn around and cut six out of eight of the express routes that are intended to do just that. I don't know if the public was, but as a legislator, I was provided impact statements on the routes to be cut in my district. And there was not one piece of data on the basis for these cuts. No data on the ridership as to why these routes have been selected for cuts. And when these cuts are made, I, like the other gentleman, wondered, with 86% of the services reduced, there should in turn be impacts on what management is being earned. So if a few of these 15 executive-level positions were also eliminated or reduced, then those savings could go into restoring some of these services and keeping the drivers on the road. We don't have all the answers because frankly, there's not a lot of transparency in what is being presented to us. And so far, we haven't seen the efficiency study released to the public. I hear that's about to happen and I look forward to hearing that. The deficit that's being, the number that's being thrown around represents 6.5%, a small percent of a budget nearing $150 million. And I would say that these cuts are absolutely not necessary right now on a deficit that small. I would also say that this agency could operate for a short time on a small deficit. They wouldn't be the first aid agency to do that while they're awaiting solutions to be presented by the governor's administration that could include tapping into surplus funds or awaiting some of the freed-up debt revenue funds that will be coming up as bonds are paid off. I feel like instead of those options, they're inconveniencing a lot of people, many of them here, who are already challenged in their ability to get transportation, some of whom are disabled, parading us up to the microphone to make statements that are of no surprise to any of us. And I'm just not sure, you know, I hear what Mr. Rose is saying. I hear what my colleagues are saying, but I think it's a three-way street. I think it's the governor, the legislature, and the agency. And we have to, the three of us, come together. I would also point out that on the last day of the legislative session, on June 20th, the Senate voted overwhelmingly to increase the budget allocation to Ripta by $15 million over what the governor had allocated. This was a priority of the Senate and the legislature, both House and Senate, made that happen. The reference to the $10 million amendment, that was not necessarily a win. It was voted down by a small majority because, first of all, in passing it, it would have had to force the budget back to the House, which could have jeopardized the entire budget and the $15 million we just voted for you. So if anybody would like to speak to me about that, you can email me at LoriUrselforPawtucket@gmail.com and I'll be happy to elaborate. And I thank you for the time.
Hi, my name is Tara. Sorry, I live in Warwick. You heard a little bit about me from my partner, but I'll talk about myself. I do just want to first start by saying that though I had to come here from Warwick, I've been really moved by the stories from people here in Pawtucket, Central Falls. And I read the one, which means I end up crossing with a lot of people from Pawtucket, Central Falls, on a great line. So just I strongly support all riders who are going to be affected by this and all riders and all people of Rhode Island will be affected by these. So I ride Route 1 every single day, right off Post Road and right to the Thayer Street Tunnel. I work and I am a student at Brown University. I cannot and do not drive to personal health reasons. Like my partner mentioned, I chose where I live specifically because of having this bus accessibility. So it's not just a convenience. This is like a lifeline for me. Sorry, I'm so nervous. Like I said, here at Brown, Brown has been really, especially lately, I worked here for two years, but even more so than usual lately, Brown has been promoting the generous benefit that Brown allows all students, staff, and faculty free rides on the Ripta. As Providence has gotten a lot more expensive, a lot of people here at Brown have been pushed out of Providence and pushed to places like Warwick and Cranston and Pawtucket. There's a huge network of staff members in these areas and we rely on a lot of Ripta services, but really primarily Route 1 is our commuter route. And by eliminating the segment of Route 1 south of Shaw's at Warwick, it's cutting out massive amounts of people who live in Warwick and who take the bus with me to Brown every single day. The proposed segment cut leaves us a mile away at Shaw's. And I understand that relative to other cuts, a mile difference may not seem like a lot on paper, but Post Road is an extremely busy commuter street. I barely feel safe crossing the street to get to my original stop in the first place, but, you know, that's beyond it. Having to imagine walking 30 minutes when, I mean, half of the year it's pitch black, either in the evening or in the morning, to get to that new segment at Shaw's. That's not just like hard or distressing, like that will be impossible. I will be stranded if this happens. Cutting Route 1's direct connection to these residential, commercial, and industrial hubs like Brown, like TF Green, like these businesses on Post Roads which have huge commuter bases, this Walmart, this McDonald's, this Dunkin'. Route 1 takes me to Rhode Island Hospital. That's my access to Rhode Island Hospital. Cutting this will isolate Rhode Islanders from work, education, from community. If this happens, I will be cut off from my job, my campus, the broader Providence community. I will lose freedom, safety, and connection, as will every single other Ripta rider and people who love them. I strongly oppose these service cuts. I'd really explore the Ripta Board to look into other options and I really implore everyone here tonight to call their governors and representatives if they haven't already. And thank you.
Hello. My name's Jonathan Flynn and I live in Pawtucket for the past 13 years. This meeting started with the phrase "service change." This is not a change. This is the evisceration of public transit in Rhode Island. And it's the largest cuts in Ripta history. And how did we get there? There's been no leadership and no vision on transit in the state of Rhode Island for decades. We have one of the lowest per capita spending reimbursements for public transit in the nation. I could only find one transit authority that gets less money. That's in Virginia. And the only dedicated revenue stream we have is the gas tax, which is a shrinking revenue stream. With EVs and better gas mileage, that's a dying revenue stream. So what can we do? What can we do? Well, the first thing, we need to find a diversified revenue stream. One is to bring back the car tax. Not to give to local property, but as a yearly fee that goes to transit. The second revenue enhancement that we can look to, that they do in other places, is devote a sliver of the sales tax to transit. It would fill in a huge gap and would be almost painless to most people. The other thing that we can have is value land capture. When we invest in the new train station in Central Falls and the developers come in and build an apartment building next to it, right now, we're throwing tax subsidies at them but not getting anything in the appreciation, in the upside of their property, once the traffic, I mean, once the transit comes online. So we're just wasting money, wasting money. This may sound trivial, but we need to change the name. Ripta is a toxic brand. It is the rest-in-pace transit authority. Okay? And once the name goes, you can start from scratch. Everybody can have a new understanding of what Ripta means and what it should do and what it could do. Now, I moved here 13 years ago. I had a very nice automobile. It's what's now called a Genesis. It was a beautiful, paid-for, four-door luxury sedan. And it got 14 miles to the gallon. And I moved to Newport Avenue and I was on three bus lines and the MBTA. And I said, "Why do I need this automobile? I don't." And I got rid of it. So for the last 13 years, I've been getting around, walking, which is great for my health, and taking the train. I worked at the State House as a lobbyist and my client was at the trains, was at the airport. So it was easy for me to get back and forth on the MBTA or the one. And it was frequent, it was safe, it was reliable. Ripta isn't any of those things anymore and it could be. And we really need to reimagine what public transit can be. I've lived in Dublin, I've lived in Boston, I've lived in New York. People take transit. It doesn't have to be the Rhode Island Poverty Transit Authority, which is what our legislature has reduced this to. And as long as enough dishwashers and maids and laborers can get to work, that's okay. They don't have to do anything else. That needs to change. We need to get everybody on transit. And it could happen, but things need to change for that to happen. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Tom Q. I'm a resident of the city of Pawtucket. I'm also a retired Ripta bus driver. For many years, I drove over the streets of Pawtucket and listening to all the fine citizens that came out tonight with some great ideas, along with our electric leaders, who do really care about the bus system. They do, they made a tremendous effort up there at the State House this year. It just wasn't quite enough to cover Ripta's deficit. But all these routes out here in Pawtucket, they go back over 100 years. They go back to the horsecar days, the streetcar days, and for the beginning of diesel buses. And they even had an electric trolley bus system that ran out here. But you take any one of these routes, they can tell you a story. The 75 bus goes to Lincoln Mall, but it also in the morning serves Martin Street, which is an industrial area where many riders take the bus to get to work. And at the end of the lineup in Lincoln is North Central Industrial Park, where again, people going to work early in the morning, ride that bus. And during the day, it services Lincoln Mall with its Lincoln Tech. And there's also a large medical facility up there along with Amica. And I believe, I'm not sure what bank it is, but they have a computer center up there. And you go to the 73, it services Middlesbrough Avenue. It ends up at CCRI, a link for citizens in the city of Pawtucket to get to higher educational vocational training. It also is close to Davies Vocational and it serves the casino. The 71 bus, it starts up in Menden Road, it stops in Shop, comes down to Hana Broad Street to Valley Falls, Central Falls, and into Pawtucket, and then goes over to Pawtucket Avenue over the Job Lot. The Job Lot then is going to be cut out. 80, 76, I was a route I was doing where I got to meet my friend Daniel. And that services the Donaldson area. There's going to be a new high school built on Columbus Avenue. Guess what? No bus service, nothing, right? Central Avenue has many small businesses and Technereplex is over there. And it also connects with Gatra up by the Benefit Central Line. So my hope is that something can be done, a delay, a pause. And I think it was a good suggestion by Senator Ursel about that. I've also profited the same thing. We need a pause. And to just eliminate the amount of service that's proposed, it's become a metro system. It's not statewide anymore. It won't be statewide. It'll be a metro system. So I hope that something can be found in the form of a few million dollars or at least a pledge. When they do the reconcile in the fall, they have a budget that has to be submitted by all authorities and departments to the state. And maybe at that particular time, when they do another revenue evaluation, they can come up with the money to backfill Ripta. But I want to thank everybody that rode my bus over the years. It was a pleasure chauffeuring you. And let's keep up the good fight. I'm very proud of the way people turned out.
I'm Mary Healy. I live here in Quality Hill. I just want to say that I agree with 99% of what was said this evening. And I have an opportunity to travel for my job and I've been to many cities, whether it's Los Angeles, Boston, South Dakota, Boulder, Colorado. And one of the things they have is a thriving transit system. And there's two pieces to this puzzle. One is focusing on not failing. I took the bus to URI. It gave me an opportunity to study, to save money because I was driving, I wasn't driving. And on the flip side of that coin is the opportunity to thrive, which is people are more successful when they're able to get around and move around. And as I was listening to everyone, I was thinking about the body, right? And I was thinking about the blood vessels. And what I'm hearing is they want to cut those blood vessels. Well, you know what? Those body parts are going to die. And the challenge here is it's not a finger, an arm, or a leg. It's people. So this is unacceptable that it gets cut. It's not going to happen. Do something about it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Irwin and I'm speaking to you tonight as an employee and more importantly, a resident of the city of Central Falls and faithful Ripta rider for 30 years. A part of Ripta's mission statement is "to provide safe, reliable, and cost-effective transit service." Just three years ago, Ripta partnered with the city of Central Falls and invested a combined $305,000 to five thousand dollars to promote the use of Ripta buses from the new train station, and more importantly, within the city of Central Falls. Again, this was an initiative to encourage ridership and to support Ripta's mission of providing reliable service within the city. To quote a press release from Ripta, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, "Central Falls was an ideal test area because it covers a small geographic area with a high population density." Now, two years after the conclusion of that program, parking lots are becoming apartment buildings with the intent that people can rely on public transportation to reduce the need for cars. In Ripta's response, let me repeat, after encouraging people to rely on public transportation, is to reduce and completely eliminate service that runs through the heart of the city. By eliminating services within Central Falls, Ripta is failing to live up to their mission statement. Personally, I frequent the seventy-five, a line that Ripta plans on eliminating. I can provide anecdotes about how this specific route provides me access to multiple grocery stores, important, essential doctor's offices, and easy access to the train station, and more. But my story is the same as everyone else's personal testimony that Ripta is a central resource for Pawtucket, Central Falls, Rhode Island, and beyond. And the fact that people need to provide these stories to prove to Ripta, the state of Rhode Island, or whoever else has a hand in providing funding, that bus routes are imperative and essential, and insert adjective here, shows that we can't rely on you at all.
Good evening, and thank you for holding public hearings. There's many comments that were made that are similar to what I wanted to say, but I will highlight a few. The public universe, I mean, excuse me, the private universities, who charge fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year for tuition, and do have a partnership with, uh, Ripta for their students, which is well-needed, is that they need to pay their fair share. They do not pay federal income taxes that support federal public transportation programs and grants, like what Ripta received with the electric buses and other infrastructure over time. In addition, I appeal to those private universities and colleges that if they can't find the funds, they should appeal to their wealthy alum to support their students who want to gain an education, to improve themselves, and their families, and our society. Because you cannot elevate a society unless you have an educated public. In addition, the retail establishments and organizations and companies that have received millions in dollars in tax breaks for the state of Rhode Island to come here and develop, and because they've also received federal income tax breaks in the last recent years to cut their corporate tax rate, I do not understand why Ripta and the board has not created partnerships with those retail establishments, those, um, companies that need employees. However, some employees may not be able to drive, and they need a workforce to be able to get back and forth to work. So, I know there's many similar things that people have said, but I wanted to highlight those. But it's really a shame that Rhode Island is smaller than the size of the county of Los Angeles, and they cannot manage a public transportation program. In addition, I have been overseas, I've worked overseas, and I took many subway and, uh, public bus, and I have never had to deal with public transportation here in Rhode Island where the buses are filthy. I do not understand why they're not cleaned. Supposedly, they're supposed to be cleaned when they go back to the garage, but let me tell you, there is disgusting stuff on the, the floors, and many times, unfortunately, it's sad, some public don't seem to know and want to properly dispose, dispose of their trash, so unfortunately, Ripta is, uh, unfortunately, Ripta has to handle it. But it's disgusting. And if tourism is, I believe, the top-third revenue-producing income here in Rhode Island, it is not a very good, uh, public relations to show that you have disgusting, filthy buses in order to promote tourism in Rhode Island. So, um, in particular, also, I'd want to highlight that I was on a bus recently, and there was a, a mother, she had two children. She says Ripta does not offer family passes. She cannot get two hundred and ten dollars every month to be able to have her children go to school and require doctor appointments all the time. She's short, and then gets hassled by Ripta bus drivers because she doesn't have the full fare. And that is sad, because you should really think of, uh, these families who do not possibly make a living wage here to pay for rising rents, uh, and help them because of, perhaps do a sliding scale for those families if they are above Medicaid and do not qualify for the, uh, other types of transportation. Myself, I cannot afford to get my car fixed. I have been diagnosed with a medical condition, and I have had to delay surgery. I have been notified by my, um, employer that possibly my job is going to be eliminated recently, and I am, uh, and I, without going into details, but the treatment that I am under is very toxic, and I've been very sick. My landlord does not reduce my rent if I am out sick. I am negative in my sick leave, and I do not qualify yet for family medical leave. And right now, I have been relying on trans, public transportation to get back and forth to work. Please do not cut services for third-shift workers and weekend workers, holiday workers. I am a mandatory worker that is required to come in twenty-four-seven if it is needed at any time that my employer requires mandatory staffing. So, please, please, help the public, continue their education, help the individuals, the working class that pays federal and state income taxes for public transportation so that they can get to their workplaces and education, and for their families and doctors. I need to rely on the buses right now for medical, and my, uh, healthcare premiums have gone through the roof from last year to this year. My out-of-pocket maximum's gone through the roof. I get two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven-dollar bills for an ambulance ride from urgent care to go to a hospital, and I don't know how I'm gonna pay that, and then have the worry of having, uh, uh, upcoming surgery down the line, that I have a life-threatening, uh, condition. So, I am trying to maintain my, uh, housing, but I do not know how I'm gonna do that, if you do cut services, and if, and hopefully will not, uh, consider, um, raising any of the fares. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janaya Smith, and I am new to Pawtucket as of June first. So, I'm, my, my lease and moved here. And as I'm echoing even more what other people have said, is that transportation is a lifeline for me, so much so, when I made a life-altering decision such as moving, I partly moved to Pawtucket because of the phenomenal service area that it had. And now, here we are. And, and yes, I am somebody who, as that was, I wanna speak to what was said earlier, that I don't, I don't use fixed routes, but I use the paratransit system. And I think it is, we, I don't wanna, we're creating an illusion, at least from what I was getting from the beginning, that people like myself who rely on it because we have the Ride Anywhere program, that there's no, that we're not, that we're not, um, affected by these. Because I wanna say, yes, the Ride Anywhere program, we are extremely grateful to it. Don't get me wrong. I have used it. It's been great. However, these changes are gonna make it that I'm gonna have to rely on the Ride Anywhere program way more than what I'm comfortable with. And the Ride Anywhere program is not guaranteed rides. It goes by availability. With these changes, that is going to make it that there's gonna be a huge increase in the Ride Anywhere, Ride Anywhere program, of which I would be worried, that is why I wouldn't be as comfortable, if I would be able to get a ride every time that I'm going to need it. I, right now, am looking for a new job, and, and now I'm even more worried. When it's already hard to find a job, now I'm even more worried about transportation. I don't wanna take a job that I have, have to heavily rely on the Ride Anywhere program. That job I may have finally got, and now I'm in jeopardy because I may have not got transportation. My boss ain't gonna understand that. Can't blame them. So, I urgently ask you all to make sure that no, you relook at everything and that stone, that you unturn every stone that you possibly can for less effects to happen to us, because you're messing with people's lives. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Pompeley. I'm a resident of Pawtucket. Uh, seems like an annual tradition. Ripta's facing, facing a budget crunch. The state, the state won't adequately fund it, and we're facing severe budget cuts, severe, uh, service cuts as a result. Naturally, Pawtucket, one of the most transit-dependent communities in the state, is getting some of the harshest cuts. I'm sure some of these look like low-hanging fruit due to, due to low ridership. Um, and Senator Kalman and Representative Stewart alluded to the transit death spiral. Service has already been decimated to the point that buses run every hour or worse. The most frequent weekday service we get on the seventy-six or the eighty is every hour and forty minutes. So, everyone with the privilege to find a more convenient mode of transportation will. Uh, there's also no incentive to take the bus to, uh, to the new train station when parking is free, but the bus is four dollars round trip, and the schedule probably doesn't align with your train. Not everyone has this privilege. It's a lifeline for those who don't. In Pawtucket, these proposed service cuts will end all service, will end all service to Stop &amp; Shop, Vicente's Supermarket, and Job Lot, as well as people's jobs and schools. While the state's spending five million dollars to build a new passenger amenity building at the Pawtucket Transit Center, Ripta's proposing to eliminate half the routes that serve the station. Does the state not realize there's a, that, that a bus to ride is a greater passenger amenity than a building to wait in if the bus isn't there to ride? I also can't help but notice there are no cuts proposed to Pawtucket's and Rhode Island's newest and most frequent route, the R sixteen thirty-six, which provides fare-free service every eight to ten minutes from paid parking lots to Centerville, Centerville Bank Stadium. That's more trips in an hour and a half than the seventy-six or eighty C in an entire day. How Ripta, in such a severe budget crunch, can afford to provide this service and only be compensated with free advertising in the stadium escapes me. Sorry, am I too close to this other microphone? Only be compensated with free advertising in the stadium escapes me, especially with more than a hundred thirty million dollars of public funds invested in the stadium, including ten million dollars of Pawtucket's COVID relief funds, the exact amount of funding that would stave off these service cuts statewide. Not that Rhode Island doesn't invest in transportation infrastructure, several other higher-profile and more expensive highway projects aside, Ripta recently replaced two ninety-five overpasses in Pawtucket, over East Street and over Roosevelt Avenue, at a cost of twenty-five million dollars. The money is there. We just need to get our priorities straight. Promoting economic development doesn't only mean funding shiny new development projects or keeping our highways in good repair. It's making sure everyone can get to work, school, and shopping. Keeping our transit system functioning for the cost of one highway overpass or one-tenth of a stadium shouldn't even be a question.
All right. So, um, I think, I know you, I emailed you, yes. So, you know my sob story, um, unfortunately. I, I, uh, I'm in high school. I seem to be the only one in high school here, unfortunately. I am a rising junior, so I graduate twenty-twenty-seven, um, and I use Ripta to get to school. Unfortunately, all of the bus cuts that Ripta will be making to Pawtucket, um, that's the only way I get home. I don't get home if I don't take the bus. I take the fifty-four, I take the seventy-three, all, seventy through eighty is very important to the citizens of Central Falls and Pawtucket, um, because we can't get anywhere. We're now locked out of, um, the rest of the state, basically. Uh, if, if you can't get onto the seventy-eight or the thirty-five, and even the thirty-five is getting restricted, right? So, you're stuck in eastern Pawtucket. So, and, and I can't, I can't get anywhere. Um, I wanna go, and I wanna talk about, has any of you, have any of you walked, uh, I forget the name of the street, but it's the, the route seventy-three takes to get to the Transit Center? Cause I have. It's the craziest street. It's the longest street you have ever walked. It is, I, I equated it to like a quarter of Rhode Island I walked. So, and that's because I missed the seventy-three bus, and without the seventy-three bus, I can't get home. I can't get to the Pawtucket Transit Station. I can't get to where I need to go. And I am turning seventeen, um, and I can't drive. I, I don't have, I just recently passed driver's ed, thank God, um, but it was rough. And, um, I also have a few conditions that make it so that I cannot drive without a medical clearance. Um, if you've seen me ticking, you know that that is a form of Tourette's. I also have a form of autism that doesn't really help me drive. So, I can suppress it, but it's not a condition that allows me to drive safely, and it has worsened over time. I have, I wasn't like this when I was six, and now here I am. I'm shaking, and you know, I'm freezing all the time. I have a low iron deficiency. I, I, I can't drive safely, you know? Um, so, I need the bus specifically for getting to school and getting to work. I think a lot of us have already said that already. Um, I want to talk about my peers. I know my peers specifically use the bus to get to the, the Providence Place Mall, which unfortunately, for malls is dying, like, and, and it's very important that our economy is stimulated with travel, you know, tourists, and I don't know if I said that word right, but you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's, it's very important that my peers can get to work, to get to school safely. And, um, I just wanna reiterate to the Ripta Board that I, I need the buses, no matter what happens. I need Bus eighty and Bus seventy-three. These routes cannot be cut. They really can't. I, like, I don't know how I'm gonna get to school. And I go to school in Windsocket, and you might say, "Oh, well, change where you go to school." I can't. I don't have the option. I go to a charter school, um, that is specifically for my needs. Um, I go to Beacon Charter High School, and it's a wonderful school, but it is very far away, and I need the buses. I just need, and, and I would like to thank you for my time.
Thank you, Caitlin. I'm so inspired by all the young people, young people who are part of this movement, who are part of the advocacy movement. Uh, my name is Dylan Giles. I'm with the Save Ripta Coalition. Uh, we were up there at the State House, as you all know, every week, pretty much, um, with a package of bills. Um, I wanna say that I'm very grateful for the elected representatives who are here tonight. Um, it was a long road. Um, we really hoped it wouldn't come to this. Um, and now, you know, I'm like being personally impacted by all of the things that we were fighting to avoid. Um, I'm a resident of Woodlawn. I ride the seventy-one, which stops at the end of my block. It takes me to my doctor's appointments in Central Falls, to, um, groceries in Cumberland. It's a really great route. It runs between the R-line and the, um, the number-one bus, but it goes north. It doesn't go to Providence. Um, and so, people who wanna get to Central Falls need to be able, be able to rely on the seventy-one. Um, thank you, Tom, earlier, for the love of the seventy-five. I also ride that to, um, to Lincoln Mall to see a movie, maybe, um, or can't really shop at Target right now, but to, to do grocery, uh, to do errands up in, up at Lincoln Mall, um, you can see the evidence that this is a well-used service just by all of the abandoned shopping carts at the stop at Lincoln Mall. Um, and yeah, so we were, we were, I'm, I'm, I'm just really heartbroken by all of these stories, by the impacts that this is going to have on all of the people who spoke tonight, on all of the people who have been speaking at the other hearings. Um, I'm really inspired by how important transit is to people, and I think we need to keep the focus where it belongs, on our state leaders who have failed the people of Rhode Island. Governor McKey should hear from all of you who spoke tonight. He ultimately was the one that proposed a budget with zero dollars to, to, um, to fill Ripta's deficit. The General Assembly came up with fifteen million, and as Tom mentioned, it wasn't enough. And so, we just, we're gonna continue fighting for all of you at the State House, and, um, we just ask that you light up the governor's office and tell him how important transit is to you. So, thank you.
So, hi. Uh, my name's Eric Harrison. Uh, I've lived in Rhode Island my entire life, except for four years in college. Um, I grew up in North Providence. My dad rode the fifty-one downtown and back every day for work. Um, and I moved back to Rhode Island after college. I got married. I had a kid. My wife's right there. Um, I moved to Lincoln, uh, which is, it's I moved to Lincoln, which is, it's halfway between my parents' house and my brother's house, and also it was right near three Ripta routes. The year after I moved there, I lost one of them already, the 53, which used to run up Smithfield Ave and terminate in Salesville. In fact, if you've ever been on Walker Street, you see the big circle by the fire station, but that's because the trolley used to turn around there before it was changed to a bus, and then eliminated. So the one I ride most often now is the 75, despite its bad frequency and short service hours. I rode it to get here tonight, but my wife had to come to give me a ride home because the last outbound 75 left at 5:20. So it's up to, it's up for elimination entirely, thanks to the failure of our governor and a large part of our legislature to properly fund Ripta. The next closest route to my home is the 71, which Dylan spoke about, slated to lose its connection to Job Lot in Pawtucket, along with all of its weekend service. So with the elimination of that Job Lot connection and all of the 75, I personally will be driving more, which, you know, I have, I'm lucky enough to have the privilege to do, but it also goes directly against the climate and mobility goals of our state. But unlike me, there's plenty of other people who don't have that luxury, like the people who live in Cumberland Manor, which is served directly by the 71 and 75. It's Cumberland's largest public housing complex, there's 176 units, every single resident is elderly or disabled, and if the cuts go through, we're leaving all of these people without any weekend service whatsoever, and no connections to any places like Job Lot where they can shop affordably. And so personally, I've been hoping to stay in Rhode Island for the rest of my life, and part of my vision included being able to get around reliably without a car, thanks to things like the Transit Forward 2040 Plan and Metro Connector Study. So if this enormous step backwards becomes reality, I can't really see myself staying in Rhode Island long-term, as much as I hate to say that. I also know I'm not alone in that feeling. If Rhode Island wants to be more than a slightly cheaper place to live for Boston workers, our transit system needs to improve dramatically. It was encouraging during the last round of service changes to see actual increases and measurable improvements for the first time in years. The $10 million needed to avoid this death blow is such a small drop in the bucket compared to the hundreds of millions that we pour into highway construction every year. In fact, the $10 million is exactly the amount of money that we spent on the giant blue highway letters by the airport. $10 million for some concrete letters and bushes. So please, please, don't let the administration turn its back on our history and our people. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Tatyana Wayana, I am one of the members of the city council in Central Falls, but most importantly, I am someone whose life was deeply shaped by Ripta. So I was born in Columbia, and I came here to the United States and to Central Falls when I was eight years old, so I've been here 25 out of my 34 years. When we got here, you know, my family has always been a hard-working family, working-class family, we didn't have a car when we first got here, and we used Ripta to get around. I remember my mom and my grandma and my siblings, and I would pack up our stuff to go to the beach, right, and we would take the 72 and then get on, I believe it was 69, and so, you know, working-class people, people from Central Falls, people from Pawtucket, who cannot afford to drive, or, you know, sometimes it was cheaper, even if you do have a car, it is cheaper to just take the bus and take the bus to the beach, which takes a long time, and now you're stuck in traffic and everything, anyway. All of that to say that, you know, Ripta did play a big role in my life, and it did even so as I grew up and went, you know, was in high school with my friends, we would go to Providence Place Mall, we'd go to downtown Providence, right, that was a way to get out of Central Falls. These are ways that our kids can get around to other towns and other cities, and to see more things than just stay in Central Falls. I think someone said that we are sort of confined to these spaces when these routes are cut, and that is, that is very true. The other thing I will say is that when I was a student at URI, I commuted, and I used the 66, and back then I had to wait an hour, and they're saying they're going to slow it down even more, or, you know, it's going to be less frequent. It took a lot of planning to get to class. I had to wake up really early, because not, not always did the bus align with my schedule. And so now I had to be on campus trying to figure out where to stay, where to hang out, how to eat, right, because I also was a working student. And so this is a lifeline, like people have said. We talk about tourism, I think a few people also mention tourism, now there's also the talk about, you know, the FIFA World Cup, if you're familiar with soccer, and what that's going to bring, and how we're, you know, going to prepare ourselves for tourism, and all of the people that are going to come to the great state of Rhode Island. But when you travel to other places, as has been mentioned before, there is public transit, and it's efficient, and it's clean, and it's a priority. And so if we are pretending to, you know, plan for all of this tourism that is coming here, we need to get our act together, because people are, you know, it's not a good look, it's not a good look for Rhode Island in terms of tourism, of trying to attract new people to come here. We talked about economic development, a few people have mentioned that as well, so I'm not going to, you know, continue to echo, but I will say that economic development goes hand in hand with public transit. Someone else mentioned this is a tradition, and it seems like it as well, right, like I remember that we keep having these hearings, and so instead of continuing these traditions, then we just need to put our money where our mouth is. We continue to say that working-class people are priorities, we continue to say that there are all of these priorities, but we are not prioritizing people in the way that they need to. So I strongly oppose these cuts, and I urge everyone involved to oppose them as well. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, my name is Larry Johnson, I live right here in Pawtucket, and it's so good to see all the people come out here that are interested in what happens to the transit service. I do use the 71 bus twice, at least twice a week, and I also use the number one and some other routes, but I'm just wondering, you know, how did we get here, you know, and why at the last minute, you know, these hearings? And then I see September, they're thinking about cutting this program, that's like right at the beginning of the winter. I mean, even in the summer, it's a problem, but in the wintertime, you know, people trying to get on a bus, they got to wait longer, now they got to call a cab, they got to call an Uber, you know, and, you know, I don't put totally the blame on Ripta, but I, I don't, I don't see any urgency from Ripta, you know, pushing for this money, you know, because the money is going to go into the Ripta budget to help, you know, make sure the routes are still here, to make sure the drivers are going to still be working. I really don't see the urgency there, and I don't really understand the direction or the priorities of the politicians, because, okay, we just got, you know, I was working for the elections, I saw all these bond issues that we had for like millions and millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, but I didn't see any for transit. I see, we got a brand-new transit station over there, the train and bus, hook up the Boston to the T, then you're going to cut the bus lines after building a new train station? I mean, what type of sense does that make? You know, it doesn't, you know, that's not a good decision, so I don't understand what Ripta's doing, and all these politicians here, they're all silent, you know, I know that they're not going to get my vote, you know, when the next election comes. And I think that we should keep in mind, too, the people that are supporting these cuts, and those who oppose, I'm definitely opposed, but these people that are supporting these cuts, and you're riding the bus and using the transit, you know, you ought to let them know, you know what I'm saying, hit them in their pocketbook, you know, and all the executives up top, you know, why don't they cut their, cut some of their jobs, you know? They're cutting routes, you know, they're cutting drivers, so I don't, so I don't really think that it's a good direction or a good look for Ripta, or for those people who are supporting these cuts, you know, it's, it's really very insensitive, you know, and it shows, you know, a lack of concern for the people, because we're talking like $10, $20 million, and you're voting on bond issues for hundreds of millions of dollars? Stop playing, come on.
Hi, my name is Joseph Bong, and I wanted to share and illustrate some stories on what I've said from Newport, and I will also add one more to this one as well. So I had a friend who studied at Johnson and Wales University, she came from abroad, and she would take the 33 from Shaw's from Riverside all the way up, work her way up to Kennedy Plaza. And another case is she, you will take the 3 and 4 to get to Johnson and Wales University. Now, if they were going to cut all those routes, you're just going to strand her standing at the, at the bus stop, she will have to call for her uncle, which I'll get into in a little bit, or her auntie, to pick her up and get to destination and destination, if this was, is to occur three years ago. Now, the second case was her uncle. She, he will sometimes take the bus to the postal office, and if they, and if you were from his workplace and at his street, if you are going to reduce service on there, he will have to walk even more. Like, that's devastating, and that's disaster. Like, you're bringing us back to the 1960s, that's what it is. And the third case is, who is a friend of our church, he will go, which is the Chinese Christian Church of Rhode Island, all these three cases that I'm mentioning right now, they attend with me. He will take the 72, she will take the 72 to Pawtucket, from her house in Mineral, off of Mineral Spring Avenue, and walk up from the Pawtucket Train Station to the church, to our church, right up here on Roosevelt Avenue. There's no, 73 doesn't run on weekends. If they were, if you were to reduce frequency on the 72, it's going to, like, her commute will take longer, and, and it's going to be bad, you know, it's, people are going to be stranded in the stops, and I feel like the solution to prevent stuff like this from happening is look at what Massachusetts is doing, I feel like, which is the millionaire's tax that's dedicated to transportation and education without having to use a general fund, you're saving a lot of money. That's all I have to say for now, and I appreciate for all you guys being here, thank you.
Hi, everyone, thanks for being here today. I've listened and heard a lot of everyone's testimony. First of all, my name is Elizabeth Marrera, I am a resident of Pawtucket, also work as the Deputy Director of Administration for the City of Pawtucket. My biggest concern is that all of us who are immersed in this world, or who English is your first language, you have this information. A lot of the people who ride the bus speak Spanish, Portuguese, Cape Verde, Creole, and we don't have this information, it's a public hearing, there's no interpreter services, there's not a reason, way that somebody who doesn't speak English can express how they feel or how this is going to impact them. So although I, all of the things that were alluded today, I 100% agree with, and, and am going to think through how we can best support, but I think the root cause is getting people whom English is not their first language, technical assistance to be able to provide testimony, to write to their legislator, to be able to come to these meetings and not feel like they don't understand anything. So I urge the people who speak another language to please mobilize your community to ensure that they can get this information in a language where they feel comfortable, and they can also express themselves in a way that they'll feel like this is really an equitable system. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Samuel Ilutario, I'm, I live in Providence, and I'm a lifelong Rhode Island resident, grew up in Warwick, and I've, I've been a Ripta rider for my entire life, or since I was like 17 or what have you, but I'm here in strong opposition to these cuts, and I just, at the risk of being redundant, I'm not going to talk about how this affects countless, countless people, I'm just going to talk about how it affects me. I ride the 3, the 72, the 51, the 14, 16, 20, 22, the R-line, all of these routes are extremely important for me to live my life, specifically, if the service, the weekend service for the 14 is cut, I will not be able to get to work. And I can tell you exactly what will happen, I will either have to take an Uber both ways to and from, I work in East Greenwich, so you can imagine that will add up very, very quickly. Or I'll have to find a new job, which would mean losing my healthcare, losing my employee benefits, and as many of you can tell, I'm, I'm, just came from work. I have barely had time to stop by my house to grab an umbrella, so that I could be here today, and it, it, it's so important to continue to fund Ripta, and believe that I'll be speaking to the leadership of the legislature and Governor McKee about this. Thank you.
Great doggone, resident of Providence, I've been a lifelong environmentalist and a transit advocate for, at the turn of half a century, an active transit advocate. I just want to say two things. One, I will give my full testimony Monday in Providence at the Public Learning Base, so I invite everybody to come and hear me there. I want to praise and commend the Ripta administration, because they're excellent folks, and they're doing an excellent job, and obviously the service cuts that they're saying they need to do if they don't get the extra 10 minutes was based on numbers, and because obviously it was very precise, extraordinarily precise listing of, of the service cuts that they would have tonight, the, to me. I just want to say one thing, that people are talking about, gee, we need to give Ripta more money, and I agree, and so where does the blame mostly reside? With the state legislature and the leadership of the state legislature. But also, we need to increase ridership on Ripta. That is fundamental, that is doable, and I will have suggestions on Monday, and Ripta Jersey makes suggestions at their monthly board meetings. But that's key, we should be talking to everybody about checking out Ripta, trying it out, see if it works for them. I'm not suggesting that people take Ripta every day of the week, they've got errands to do after work, you know, car's more convenient, but they could try Ripta one, two days a week, and it might work for them. So anyways, I'm glad everybody's here, and everybody is going to get a, make some phone calls, that's very important, and hopefully I'll see you all on Monday.